Good morning, everyone. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the President of the Minneapolis City Council. I'd like to welcome you all to City Hall today. Often before we begin our official business, we have a moment to pause and honor important people in our community. And today, I'm honored to be here with Councilmember Goodman to pass a resolution in honor of Mary Ann Worgelin Day. And I'll turn it over to Councilmember Goodman to introduce and read the resolution. And we'd love to invite the family and Mary Ann up if you'd like to join us for this special event. It always goes this way, so that's why I keep talking as you come. Wonderful. Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Council President Bender. So I'm really honored to have an opportunity to read this resolution for someone who I am personally quite close to, have traveled to Finland with, and know so well. And often, that does not happen, but I'm really honored to be able to honor you today. So today is Mary Ann Worgelin Day, declaring August 23rd, 2019, Mary Ann Worgelin Day. Whereas Mary Ann is a nationally recognized scholar of Finnish-American history, and whereas Mary Ann has created connections between Minneapolis and Finland for over 50 years, including her work to establish meaningful relationships between Minneapolis and our sister city, Quoepio, Finland, a partnership that was established in 1972. And whereas Mary Ann was the co-founder and co-chair of the Reunion of Sisters, a culturally and scholarly exchange between Finland and the U.S. at the University of Minnesota. And whereas Mary Ann served on the advisory board to create the government of Finland, David and Nancy Speer Visiting Professorship of Finnish Studies at the University of Minnesota. Whereas Mary Ann was pivotal in bringing the former president and Nobel Prize winner, Marti Atisari, how's that, to Minneapolis in 2010. And whereas Mary Ann was instrumental in creating the Finnish-American Chamber of Commerce in Minnesota in 2010. And whereas Mary Ann served as the president of FinFest USA in 2004, and was critical in bringing FinFest USA to Minneapolis in 1983, 2002, 2014, and 2017. And whereas Mary Ann helped create an exhibition at the Minneapolis Institute of Arts with Jennifer Comar Olavares that commemorated the 150th anniversary of the first Finnish immigrants arriving in the United States. And where Mary Ann was instrumental in working with the Minnesota Orchestra to celebrate the 100th anniversary of the Republic of Finland, which included a visit by the Finnish president, Sauli, okay, don't help me, Ni Ne Stud, in September of 2017. And whereas Mary Ann served as the honorary council of Finland for Minneapolis for the past 20 years. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council hereby declare Friday, August 23rd, is Mary Ann Worgelin Day in the city of Minneapolis, acknowledging, celebrating, and honoring the important role she has played in establishing and maintaining connections with Finland and our sister city of Quoepio. Thank you. (applause)
Mary Ann, on behalf of Meet Minneapolis, our organization, and the Minneapolis Global Partnership Program, which recognizes our 12 sister cities, we want to thank you for all your efforts to bring Minneapolis and Quoepio, Finland closer together, and recognize you for that. It's been a pleasure to work with you for the last, I think, 20 years, and we look forward to seeing more of you, too. Our friends across the river have sent a message. The Minnesota Trade Office and the state of Minnesota also recognize Mary Ann Worgelin's exceptional service as honorary council to Finland. Mary Ann was the prime mover in Finland's 2017 presidential delegation to Minnesota, a historic high point in the longstanding friendship between Finland and Minnesota. Your outstanding work will deliver dividends for years to come. We are all deeply grateful. The Minnesota Trade Office.
Would you like to say a few words? This is a little bit more than I had expected. Thank you very much. I want to remind all of you that Minneapolis is an international city, and that we need to continue to constantly realize that by being an international city, we help Minneapolis be Minneapolis. Minneapolis has so much strength, and by being able to take advantage of people who will give the guide, the path into understanding other countries, it will make Minneapolis stronger and play a stronger role in the global community, which it must do. I want to acknowledge here my fellow honorary council people, the Chair of the Minnesota Consular Corps, Bruce Karstedt, who represents Sweden, and Mark, who represents the Netherlands and is the vice council, Miria, who is the former honorary council of Japan, and finally, in the end of the row here, my successor, Elaine Kumpala, the new honorary council of Finland. We will continue to be a presence in the city of Minneapolis and the state of Minnesota. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much for joining us. Thank you so much for your service, and we welcome the opportunity to work together in the future. Thank you so much.
One last thing. Excuse me. I really do also want to say that any of this has only happened because it's been the kindness and the willingness to overlook lots of stuff on the part of my husband, Clifford Brown, who's next to me, my son, Christopher Brown, who has been a part of this from his very beginning, and my daughter, Maya Brown, who has also been a part of this from the very beginning. Thank you.
That was great. That was great. Good morning again. My name is Lisa Bender. I'm the President of the Minneapolis City Council. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the city council for August 23rd to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Conno.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami is absent. Cunningham.
Present.
Ellison.
Prove.
Goodman.
Present.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Colleagues, the agenda for today's meeting is before us. I'll see if there are any amendments to the agenda from councilmembers. Seeing none, I will mention that we do have one item on our agenda that requires a unanimous vote. Let the record reflect that we've been joined by Councilmember Worsami. I do want to amend the agenda, I suppose, to move the Order of Unfinished Business forward into our agenda now that we do have a full quorum of the council to ensure that we have everyone here for that vote. I haven't seen any other amendments, so with that, may I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended with that one, scheduling change in the order. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the agenda is adopted. Next, we have the minutes from our meeting on August 8th and August 15th for acceptance. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and those minutes are accepted. Finally, we have the referral petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and those referrals are made. Reflecting the change in our agenda, we will then move to the Order of Unfinished Business, which includes the referral from the Intergovernmental Relations Committee on the proposed charter amendment related to a biennial budget process. I'll recognize Councilmember Johnson for the introduction of the report with the committee's recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have this one item, unfinished business, passage of an ordinance amending the city charter related to budgeting, establishing a biennial budget process. As you noted earlier, this item requires 13 councilmembers to vote, and so I will go ahead and move this item.
Councilmember Johnson has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. I do just want to say something briefly. So many stakeholders came together over the past year to find really appropriate language for this amendment by ordinance, and I think we're there to maintain the balance of power that exists in our complex and intra-jurisdictional system. Working with our city's finance staff, thank you, our attorney's office, the mayor's office, Councilmember Cunningham, Minneapolis Park and Rec Board, and the person who led that effort is here, Commissioner Vitale, the Board of Estimate and Taxation, and the Charter Commission. Regardless of the vote today, I want to point out that that's been a rewarding experience, and I look forward to potential positive impacts of implementing this someday. We can develop more impactful initiatives and can encourage cross-departmental collaboration, something that we're always striving for, but often we find that there's just not enough time. We're on a constant budgeting treadmill. I do believe that this initiative will lead us to better governance over the city's budget, and I really want to thank those that showed up in public hearings in front of the Charter Commission and in front of IGR. I think it's really notable to take a look at the communities that showed up for this initiative, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I also just wanted to speak my support for this amendment, and I have a letter from the Racial Equity Community Advisory Committee that I would like to read for the record, as well as share with my colleagues. So this is from them. Mayor Frye and city councilmembers, we are writing you in support of the city council voting to amend the charter to allow for a biennial budgeting period. The Racial Equity Community Advisory Committee is a part of our, as a part of our charge, are called upon to advise on several matters, the budget included. As active constituents and individuals committed to seeing the city lead in a manner that centers equity in all matters, as supported by the recent council adoption of the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan, we encourage the members of the council to use this newly adopted framework, which gives direction to city leaders in the development of operational plans and activities. It is our belief that a council decision to amend the city charter to allow for biennial budgeting will achieve the internal operational goal of engaging diverse communities. It has been our experience, when asked to provide feedback on the 2019 budget, that the time and notice provided to us did not give our committee adequate time to review and provide a holistic recommendation. While we understand that the opinion of Councilmember Gordon is that the decision should be left to the voters of Minneapolis by way of a ballot item, we feel this decision would be inequitable, as it turns the burden of responsibility on a council-specific function to the constituents. We implore you to support biennial budgeting and to use your position as elected officials of our city to make decisions that close gaps and put Minneapolis on a successful trajectory for all residents, and particularly those who have been left behind. Respectfully, the Racial Equity Community Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to speak briefly on this issue. I think it's pretty clear. Everybody's heard my position beforehand on it, and I'm not supporting this action right here today, and I thought folks might deserve some kind of explanation. So briefly, I just wanted to articulate, first of all, that I really appreciate the discussion and the work of my esteemed colleague from southwest Minneapolis on this, to look at how we're doing our budgeting and how we could do it better and more thoughtfully. I appreciate that. I'm unable to support this action right here for three main reasons. First of all, I think it's unnecessary. I think it's unwise, and I also think it's undemocratic. I think it's unnecessary because I actually think most of the problems that we've created aren't being created by the charter. They're being created by the council and the way we've done budgeting over the years and do budgeting over the years. I think that the charter actually would allow us to implement many of the ideas, and if the mayor wanted to have a two-year approval to propose that, and then have a soft redo as a semi-supplemental budget, he could. I've certainly seen mayors in the past come back with a much lighter touch to the budget and councils with a much lighter touch. We created a budget committee as a council. We don't have to have that. It hasn't always existed. All the charter requires is a report out in August, and not even all the public hearings that we hold. So we've decided to hold more and do more over the years and create that. So I think we could actually implement a lot of these ideas and suggestions with a willing council and mayor, and try some of these things out and even pilot them under the current charter as it exists. I also really appreciate that the charter right now allows for some flexibility, so I'm not sure if it would be a wise thing to push people into this two-year budget. We have financial crises that come to our city. We have elections that come and go. We have, sometimes we may end up having a two-term council. And having a flexibility for the mayor and the council to determine based on what they hear from their constituents in the public, what kind of budget process to do, I think, makes us more nimble, more flexible, and more able to respond to those kind of crises and needs as we go forward. I'm also concerned, because I do think that it's undemocratic to decide it in this way. So even if I got my head around voting for it in the ballot box sometime, which I could, I'm concerned because this is actually a provision in the charter, not something that we've sat sitting in the charter for years and never acted on. This is something that's been in the charter from the beginning, and we've acted on it. The public's used to it. People understand it. Doing an annual budget and a minimal report out in August on what that budget is and some kind of approval on it is something everybody's used to. State law will actually still require us to do a public hearing in December and approve a levy anyway, so that requirement is still there. But I think if we're going to make this kind of change in something that's been part of our city for this long, it's worth putting it on the ballot and amending it in that way. So I'll be voting no, but I really appreciate the work that's gone into this and all the discussion that it's created for us, and hopefully it will let us improve our budgeting process going forward.
I'll note that we've been joined by Mayor Frye, who I think wants to make some remarks, and I also see Councilmember Palmasano in queue, so Mayor Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be brief. I support the change for a biennial budget first because it allows for very thoughtful planning. The way the process works right now is that our budget staff and finance department, they get finished at some point in December with the budget following the council adoption, and then they immediately start working on it again in January or early February. This process does not allow us to dig into the entirety of the budget. Instead, we're focused predominantly on the change items, and I think there are a lot of good would come from being able to dig into the entire budget, figure out where the efficiencies are, figure out where the flaws are, and then make true progress going forward. Second, it allows for data to be properly collected following the review of a particular program. Right now, we adopt, say, a pilot on streets or on parks, and that pilot moves forward in January, February, and March and April usually. That pilot is just being planned. Following the planning stages, it then gets executed, and there's only a couple of months before the budget needs to get pre-proposed yet again. So to truly get the data necessary to make decisions, both on my recommended budget and the council's adoption, I think it would behoove all of us to have more time. Third, it allows for additional engagement, and this may not be self-evident right away, but if you have the additional time, you can have a deeper engagement process that focuses on more than just the change items. You could touch on the entirety of the budget, and I do think that would be helpful. So I am supportive of the biennial budget. I appreciate the council's deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to briefly respond to some of the arguments that were put forth earlier. I am proposing that we codify a transparent, accountable, and predictable budgeting process, one that allows us as policymakers to better oversee and manage not just change items every year, but the existing service level year to year. One that allows for greater public engagement on that existing service level is we actually entertain conversations about what real impactful change is. And this also provides space to form an established participatory budgeting process as well. Some suggest that we can do this without a charter change, which I'll remind my colleagues is in direct opposition to the positions of our city attorney, our CFO, our IGR director, the budget director, the park board, and members of the Board of Estimate and Taxation. I think that's not only false, it's counter to the aims of this proposal, but it also could set a dangerous precedent. This proposal codifies a process that is not subject to change every year or every time a new administration comes in. It cements a formal process, and it defines what our budgeting process is, which is something that we currently lack. The dangerous suggestion that we do this anyway creates even less stability. It creates less predictability, and I think it leaves the process of each budget up to the political convenience of whoever the mayor is and whoever has a majority. That's not predictable to departments, and it's certainly not predictable to the public. I think that's not democratic. And the idea that we need to put this to the voters, but let's do this anyway, I find there to be frankly a lot of hypocrisy in that.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. To say that something has always been that way, and therefore it should stay that way, is the definition of the status quo, and to label that as democratic is very problematic. What is, if we look back at the U.S. Constitution, originally, I was not even defined as a person, and thankfully, that has been changed. Northsiders and people of color and indigenous folks overall have been systemically marginalized from our democracy, and this is the attempt at a systemic change that will help for us to clear a pathway for us to have a more robust, direct engagement with people and residents in the city that I represent. I believe that this is just the first step in having conversations around the budgeting process. When we look across the country at other cities like Oakland, they have a very robust, systemically institutionalized process of participatory budgeting, and I feel like that is our next step beyond this. And that, in my opinion, is democracy in full action, is to be able to have a bottom-up process in which the community is able to help us. Right now, that is not possible. I try my best as a council member to be able to bring my community in as early as possible after the mayor produces the budget, but what about being able to get ahead of that? There just is not enough time currently. I also think that it's very important for us to be able to have the opportunity to really dig into data. I commend Councilmember Palmasano for her leadership with results Minneapolis and how we've incorporated that into the budget process, and also, we can continue to deepen that. It's working now, and it is a good process, and also, we have the ability to really dig in beyond just the change items and be able to look into billions of dollars that we currently are not able to because there isn't time and the capacity to do so. I would ask for my colleagues to please support this. For it to go to a ballot is inequitable. If we look at who votes across the city and the voter turnout across the city, it is clear that it is not actually improving the voice of people of color and in geographically marginalized areas like communities like mine. I think that consistency and predictability is important within systems. Leadership changes depending on, you know, somebody might not get re-elected, somebody might not choose to run again, and then the process will change all over again based on the whim of whoever's in leadership. We need to be able to make these processes leader-proof. No matter who is in leadership, it is consistent, predictable, and ongoing. So I hear and respect the dissenting voice in this, with this decision, but I do sincerely ask that it is reconsidered because of the fact that maintaining the status quo is not healthy for our democracy, particularly for people of color and northsiders that I represent. Thank you.
Thank you. I put myself in queue and perhaps should have done so earlier. I will be voting no today, and just again, also wanted to take some brief time to explain why by way of explanation. I think a lot of good work has gone into developing a proposal to shift to a biennial budget, and I think there are lots of potential, great outcomes that could happen for our city by budgeting longer term, and certainly by taking a deeper look into our existing programs, which many of us have done over the years in our budgets. I think we can achieve the same goals without amending our charter, which is a significant change that is very difficult to undo. I've seen over my six years in office that there are extraordinary institutional barriers to deep reform, and while a biennial budget may help us solve those and overcome those, it actually also may reinforce them in other ways. And again, I think having served for now my sixth, you know, going into my sixth budget season across two different councils and mayor administrations, I think a charter change relies on the leadership to ensure that there is a continued focus in race equity, in access, in hopefully in the future participatory budgeting, but we do not have many of those things codified today. I'm not sure I have the same argument as my colleague Councilmember Gordon about the value of charter change by council action versus ballot action, but rather, I have some concerns about where we're at in the process of defining what a biennial budget would look like for our city, and do not have enough insurances in place for a ward like mine, where we have to work really hard to engage people, where the council member who has come in from this ward, I think there are lots of institutional barriers to making change. I'm not convinced that we wouldn't have staff telling us we can't work on any ordinances in the budget year. That's what happens at the legislature, which has been referred to as a model for a biennial budget process. If we have changes in our electoral process, that would mean councils might have only one budget, and councilmembers learn a lot in their first budget season. I think those lessons are applied to future budgets. I've also seen that sometimes it takes time to make incremental change, and while you can argue that it's easier to make change if you're looking out longer, I mean, one time we had to get $20,000 in the budget to enforce worker protection policies because that's all we could get the council to support in that year, but in the following year, we were able to significantly increase that amount. And so I think there's pros and cons. I think there are many benefits that we could see for a city in a biennial budget, but I think that there are, we've heard process concerns. I just wanted to voice some substance concerns as well. So I will see if there's any other comment. I didn't intend to have the last word, so I'm happy to take additional comment if necessary or desired. I don't see any. So on the item that Councilmember Johnson has moved in the IGR report, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes and 2 nays.
That item does not carry because it required a unanimous vote of 13. I know that there will be other opportunities to discuss this. I could pause now to see if anyone wants to do that at this time, or perhaps we will hear more about this issue in the future. That brings us back to the beginning of our agenda, which is the reports of our standing committees. We begin with the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee report presented by the Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing eight items forward for approval this morning. Item number one are changes to our building code, which will ensure gender-neutral language, as well as reorganizing and streamlining a variety of provisions and sections. Item number two is a rental license reinstatement. Item three is a new business liquor license with Sunday sales. Item four is perhaps the most major item on our agenda, on the EDRS agenda, which is creating a spacing requirement with regard to tobacco shops. Item number five are the liquor license approvals. Item six is a rental license condition. Item number seven, our rental license reinstatements. And item number eight is a contract with Midwest Urban Strategies for our regional workforce development work. With that, I will move items one through eight for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. I know that there will be other opportunities to discuss this. I could pause now to see if anyone wants to do that at this time or perhaps we will hear more about this issue in the future. That brings us back to the beginning of our agenda, which is the reports of our standing committees. We begin with the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee Report presented by the Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing eight items forward for approval this morning. Item number one are changes to our building code, which will ensure gender neutral language as well as reorganizing and streamlining a variety of provisions and sections. Item number two is a rental license reinstatement. Item three is a new business liquor license with Sunday sales. Item four is perhaps the most major item on our agenda, on the EDRS agenda, which is creating a spacing requirement with regard to tobacco shops. Item number five are the liquor license approvals. Item six is a rental license condition. Item number seven, our rental license reinstatements. And item number eight is a contract with Midwest Urban Strategies for our regional workforce development work. With that, I will move items one through eight for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connaught.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Excuse me, those are my voice. Next is a report from the Enterprise Committee presented by the Chair, Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the Enterprise Committee, we have four items for approval. They are all contracts. The first is with Vitirian for ERP Finance Planning Reporting Services. The second contract is for Century Link for Voice and Data Telecommunication Services going forward that includes service to our new public service building. The third is a contract with DRT Benefits for Cobra Administration and the Affordable Care Act compliance needs. Item number four is a contract with Deloitte Consulting for Actuarial and Consulting Services to support our employee benefits program. Item number five, I am going to move that we postpone one cycle so that we can bring it forward at a time that we're ready to celebrate the importance of that resolution. So I move all four items and move the item number five to postpone one cycle.
Councilmember Palmasano has moved to adopt items one through four and postpone item five. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connaught.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and that report is adopted. The next report is from the Housing Policy and Development Committee presented by the Chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing five items forward for consideration. The first is approving the financing for the Northside Artspace Lofts at 229 Irving Avenue North. The second item and third are related. The second item is approving a side yard land sale to the Minno Bima Dizwin Affordable Housing Project. This is at the site of the Navigation Center. The third item is approving the financing plan, which includes TIF and bond issuance for the same apartment building proposal. Fourth item is a land sale and financing plan for Portland at Third Affordable Housing Project. And the fifth item is authorizing submittal of our 2018 HUD Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. I'll move all five items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to speak to item number one quickly, which is the Northside Artspace Lofts. And I just wanted to say that this project began its sort of journey to become into existence before I was in office and once I was in office, they continued to proceed forward and get financing. I think it's a really important project in a part of my ward that is currently in a lot of fear of gentrification and displacement. This is going to be a 100% affordable project with some of the units being affordable at 30% AMI, which is important. There's a lot of development happening. People are always wondering, is this for me or is this here to displace me? And I think that the fact that this project has gotten over the hump is something that I'm really looking forward to and really appreciate all the folks who put their efforts in. I also want to note that the Artspace Lofts aren't just providing affordable housing, but they're also collaborating with Juxtaposition Arts and other local artists to figure out who's going to be living in those spaces as well. Because one of the criticisms of, you know, artist housing is that it's, you know, that only white artists end up in that housing. And so hopefully with Juxtapose's involvement and the community partnerships that they formed, that's something that's a sort of a stigma that we can change about arts housing. So, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connaught.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and that report is adopted. The next report is from the Housing Policy and Development Committee presented by the Chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing five items forward for consideration. The first is approving the financing for the Northside Artspace Lofts at 229 Irving Avenue North. The second item and third are related. The second item is approving a side yard land sale to the Minno Bima Dizwin Affordable Housing Project. This is at the site of the Navigation Center. The third item is approving the financing plan, which includes TIF and bond issuance for the same apartment building proposal. Fourth item is a land sale and financing plan for Portland at Third Affordable Housing Project. And the fifth item is authorizing submittal of our 2018 HUD Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. I'll move all five items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to speak to item number one quickly, which is the Northside Artspace Lofts. And I just wanted to say that this project began its sort of journey to become into existence before I was in office and once I was in office, they continued to proceed forward and get financing. I think it's a really important project in a part of my ward that is currently in a lot of fear of gentrification and displacement. This is going to be a 100% affordable project with some of the units being affordable at 30% AMI, which is important. There's a lot of development happening. People are always wondering, is this for me or is this here to displace me? And I think that the fact that this project has gotten over the hump is something that I'm really looking forward to and really appreciate all the folks who put their efforts in. I also want to note that the Artspace Lofts aren't just providing affordable housing, but they're also collaborating with Juxtaposition Arts and other local artists to figure out who's going to be living in those spaces as well. Because one of the criticisms of, you know, artist housing is that it's, you know, that only white artists end up in that housing. And so hopefully with Juxtapose's involvement and the community partnerships that they formed, that's something that's a sort of a stigma that we can change about arts housing. So, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connaught.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
No on four, aye on the remainder.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes in the report except for item number four, which has 12 ayes and one nay.
Those items carry and the report has been adopted. Next is the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee Report given by the Chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee brings forward four items for approval this week. The first is passage of an ordinance, adding and amending provisions related to places of adult entertainment as well as a staff direction. Item number two is accepting a grant from Hennepin County for teen pregnancy prevention services for the Health Department School-Based Clinics. Item number three is authorizing a contract with Bridge Healthcare for school-based clinics' billing services. And item number four is accepting a grant for mental health services at the school-based clinics. I move approval of all four items.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gordon.
I'd like to speak to number one a little bit, but also have the staff direction I would like to move that everybody should have in front of you.
Thank you. So, I'll second your motion. I'm in.
Okay.
I think we can vote on it together with the other items, so go ahead with the comment.
I'll just clarify what the staff direction is. This is in response to something that came up at the public hearing and a discussion the committee had about cameras and the details of camera placement and some concerns that people had and we kind of reviewed those concerns with staff and they're suggesting we offer a staff direction so that they can refine the camera plan and this is what it says. Directing Business Licensing and Consumer Services Staff to work with the work group of entertainers and industry representatives to develop coverage guidelines for security camera plan submission. So it's admitting maybe we have to do a little more work on that. And did you want to just wrap that into the full motion? Because I just want to say a few comments about the whole process.
Yes, procedurally, I think we'll take the vote all at the same time, but I'll also pause and see if other councilmembers have comments specific to the staff direction. Councilmember Cunningham.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Gordon for bringing forward this staff direction. We had a robust conversation at committee about this topic and so I'm grateful for his flexibility in wanting to dig deeper into the concerns that were brought forward from entertainers and I appreciate hearing that feedback for my concerns echoing that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you both. Is there any further discussion on the staff direction in front of us from Councilmember Gordon? I don't see any, so that returns us to the underlying motion on item one on the peace agenda. Is there any discussion on that item? Councilmember Gordon, did you want to comment?
I did. I just wanted to appreciate this whole process. This has been a multi-year process and I really appreciated working with Councilmember Palmasano on this and Ward 13 office and my staff, but also the Health Department staff. I think we were able to show how we could take our time over something that seemed difficult and challenging, reach out especially to the community and especially to workers and people who are working in this business and were willing to step forward and get involved. I really appreciated that and I think it really helped us develop a much better ordinance. Right from the get-go, we were committed not to do anything that didn't have the clear support of the workers. We were able to partner with the University of Minnesota, with Mankato State University and do surveys and do outreach, also had the Sex Workers Organizing Project that we're very involved in, really appreciate the work there that helped inform me and the ordinance, I think, and make it a lot better. I think this is a first step really, so I'm also really appreciative that we have formed this work group as part of this staff direction so that we make sure that we implement this in a good way, that's effective and also putting the safety, health, and the rights of the workers first.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellison.
I just wanted to say that last night I got a text from Councilmember Palmasano asking me to wear red in solidarity and as you can see, this is the reddest thing I own. It's not quite as bright as some of my colleagues, but I think for the most part, you know, I just want to let you all know that we're standing in solidarity and I really appreciate the work that Councilmember Palmasano and Councilmember Gordon put into this, you know, as evidenced by today. Palmasano, you've been working a lot on a lot of things. You've been very busy, having a few major things come up on the agenda as well as being one of the authors for the Wage Theft Ordinance. And I think it's really important that we as a city sort of, we make a claim about, or make a statement about who's work is valued in the city. And I think that in the past, I don't know that the work that strippers, that adult entertainers put into their, put into the city has been valued as work and I think that this changes that and I think it's an important step for us to take as a council. So thank you all for being here. Thank you all for advocating for yourselves and just know that the council's here standing in solidarity with you, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I just want to speak in support of this change as well as echo Councilmember Gordon's comments that this is a first step. I really would like to encourage the sex workers group to consider expanding their outreach to communities that don't necessarily reach the sort of hierarchy of working in nightclubs or regulated spaces and certainly including transgender identified and gender nonconforming people in that conversation so that we can create a safer environment for all sex workers throughout this, across the spectrum. And so really just want to thank my colleagues who have worked on this as well as the researchers and others, some of whom live in Ward Eight, and so certainly appreciate all of their efforts and happy to support this action today.
Thank you. I put myself in queue to make a brief comment. I was there when the work began at the committee last term when I was a member of that committee, which I'm not now, and I just wanted to take a moment to say, I think sometimes we take for granted the amount of support there is for protections like these on this council, but that wasn't necessarily always the case and this was hard work that took many years, which does reflect that the sort of magnitude of what we're starting to do. And I do think it is a start. I think the commitment of the authors, Councilmembers Gordon, Palmasano, to engage directly with workers who are most affected is going to make this work sustainable and is how we're going to build on what happens today to expand it in the future, to continue our partnership together and make sure we're not leaving anyone behind, you know, and continuing to address the other issues that are facing entertainers in our community. And so, I want to thank everyone who stood up at that very first hearing and shared your stories and your persistence in making sure that you're lifting up the voices of yourselves and your colleagues, that we're working together to reduce stigma and to empower every single worker in our city. So thank you. Have my red. Thank you. Councilmember Palmasano.
Council President, I think you said it best. I wanted just to say, this isn't a top-down request. This was a request from workers within our community. Workers deserve to be safe and these actions will look to, that we look to take now, give the city more enforcement in these establishments and we hope that they also help workers have more respectful and honored relationships with the establishments they work in. I'm really proud that this has been an empowering conversation for workers, maybe through this process of reinforcing their rights and protections. I want to point out that someone said in a hearing over a year ago that they didn't think City Hall cared about them. So I wanted to make sure that the show of red on the dais proves otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the peace committee report as a whole or this item? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connaught.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and that report is adopted. Next is a report from the Transportation and Public Works Committee presented by the Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee will forward six items today for council approval. Item one is a contract amendment with CDM Smith for Fridley Filter Plant Rehabilitation Project. Item two is the 27th Avenue Northeast Street Reconstruction Project Layout Approval, Easement, Project Designation, Cost Sentiment, and Setting in the Public Hearing. Item three is the 2019 Transportation Economic Development Program Funding for Dalian Avenue North Bridge over I-94. Item four is the 2019 Transportation Economic Development Insert Structure Program Funding to reconstruction a portion of the same bridge. Item five is the assumption of consent and assignment agreement between Granite Liner
Item number nine is a contract amendment with Spec 7 Roof LLC for reduction in scope for waterproofing work for the public service building project. Item number 10 is a bid PAC 5 for public service building project solar array. Item number 11 is a bid PAC 5 for public service building project landscaping. Item number 12 is a customization of contracts form with Smart Procure Inc. for software subscription licenses. Item number 13 is a contract amendment with Robert Scheck Building Partners LP for lease of first precinct office space at 25th 4th Street North. And the final item is a contract amendment with SMG US Bank Stadium for traffic control services. And I move approval of all 14 items.
Thank you. Councilmember Worsami has moved the Ways and Means report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Allison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and that report is adopted. Next is a report from the Transportation and Public Works Committee presented by the Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee will forward six items today for council approval. Item one is a contract amendment with CDM Smith for Fridley Filter Plant Rehabilitation Project. Item two is the 27th Avenue Northeast Street Reconstruction Project Layout Approval, Easement, Project Designation, Cost Adam, and Setting the Public Hearing. Item three is the 2019 Transportation Economic Development Program funding for Dollywood Avenue North Bridge over I-94. Item four is the 2019 Transportation Economic Development Insert Structure Program funding to reconstruction a portion of the same bridge. Item five is the assumption of consent and assignment agreement between Granite Liner LLC and LaMetti &amp; Sons Incorporated for installation of large diameter pipe.